Call and order. Ms. Santiago, would you please call the row, please?
Craig Solins.
Here.
Tiffany Glanville.
Here.
Karen Taylor.
Here.
Julio Flores.
Here.
Michael Bresch, Robert Coro Jr., Juan Hernandez.
Here.
Kimberly Adler.
Here.
Richard Waring. We have a call.
Thank you. Good evening. As Chairman of the Harvard... Thank you. As Chairman of the Harvard Board Education, I need that, actually. I hereby call this meeting to order July 18th, 2017, of this regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, our television... To our television audience. The Board Superintendent are pleased that you are here to join us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted required by law. As the Hartford Board Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts and personnel appointments, and make policy decisions for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. And again, as always, I'm just going to stress that. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent, to my right. The monthly meetings of the Board are not open to the public... Excuse me, are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business. It's the time when the Board conducts its business. I'm having a rough evening, y'all. Conducts its business of governing the school system in a public area. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. The quorum and courtesy are important elements in any effective public meeting. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings are accurately recorded, I may have to ask or order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you are here to take the time this evening to join us, and we are very proud of the school system, and we thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, Mr. Flores, read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 18 de julio de 2017. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público, por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas éticas. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación, y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar, y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. One day I'll be able to read that. Mrs. Glanville, public comment?
Actually, I'm going to read the public comment introduction.
Okay. This is Miss Taylor.
No, I am team, okay. So, we as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you ready to take down your information. They will follow up within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, nosotros la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente, y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará el caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Wendy Clark?
Um, thanks. Hello, everyone. Wendy Clark, Classical Parent President, along with advocates of Classical and a very, very proud Classical parent. My concern tonight is twofold. One is that we're getting a new principal, and two is that we're following the procedure that we use to have a principal. Our governance structure is very strong here at Classical, and I have fielded probably 50 phone calls this weekend of people who are wondering why we weren't in any way contacted about this new change. So I just want to make sure going forward that we are informed of decisions that directly impact us here at Classical Magnet School. I'm always available. I frequently am out there, so I just want to make sure that you know that we feel very strongly that Classical is the place to be, and that's very important to us. So, thank you.
I'm Kimberly Haynes. I'm on... I'm here on behalf of the STEP program. I do have a daughter who's currently attending the program, who's been in the program currently two years. And now I'm reading some stuff and hearing things about some new pilot program that's going to be started to, say, get these kids or our students more inclined, get them some training or what have you. If the pilot program is just starting, when I initially enrolled my daughter into the program, these was a lot of the tools or programs that were supposed to have already been in place for her. That was one reason why I chose to have her get involved in the STEP program. Now, hearing today that they really have nothing in place, so in the last two years she's been in the program, she hasn't really learned anything new as far as job shadowing, any kind of skill training. So now to come in and do a pilot in her last year, how much is she really going to be able to benefit? Because after this last year, she's out of the program. So how fast is this pilot program going to take place? How much training is she going to be able to comprehend in this short period of time if there are really no agenda as set as far as what's going to be going forward? So in the meantime, I have my daughter and other couple of students who are already vested two years of their life in this program and actually receive no really training that they were supposed to have been receiving. So going forward, how much, I mean, is it even beneficial for me to have my daughter part of a pilot if there's really nothing set in stone that it's going to even move forward? So how long as, I mean, as far as the timeframe? So are we will have a decision, say, maybe before school start? Is what kind of, what the agenda is going to be set forth? You know, what kind of job shadowing program is available? Will people come and speak to our children to see what their intellectual abilities are? Because as of right now, you know, sometimes she getting discouraged by going there because they really doing nothing that's stimulating her. As of right now, see, she's regressing because she's not using her brain or using her abilities because there's nothing for them to do. So I want to know at this point here, what can I expect my daughter to receive from this program within the short period of time that she has left? All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Gladys Hogan?
Hi, my name's Gladys Hogan, and I also are here for the STEP program. I represent some of the parents that couldn't make it, the parents and students. And I was reading a report on what is going to be done going forward with the STEP program. And based on that report from the Center for Independence, on page three, it states that the support... That the direct support to the current teaching team acting within the current program infrastructure to enable individualized program development. This support is provided at all times in a direct collaboration with members of the team. It also states that rolling out the initial program development will occur the summer of 2017, which is just about to end. And I don't think there is any program rolled out yet. Based on this information, I'm happy to see as a parent that changes are occurring for the STEP program. And I do have to point out that the changes did not start this summer, so I'm in hopes of that the changes will start the fall of 2017. And based on this information, it also states that direct support will be provided to the current staff. So am I to assume that you made a decision to reinstate the two teachers that were removed, Ms. Mace and Ms. Rivera, for the STEP program? And I would like to... Someone to follow up on that on me. We're just here to reiterate today that, you know, changes like this should be made because these teachers were excellent teachers, and there was not a reason to really remove them from this program. And I've also been made aware that Mary Cristofaro has been removed as director from this program. And we just want assurances because there have been a numerous amount of problems with her as far as bullying, disrespecting the students, the teachers, and even the parents. She has been moved from the STEP program, but I understand she's still in the district. And I don't even think she should be in the district because I don't think any other district would allow this kind of behavior, especially from somebody that's supposed to be a director, a special ed. I hope that you would think about this as well. We as parents, we just don't want to tolerate this, and even if she's removed in one spot, moved to another, that same behavior is probably going to take place, so she needs to be removed from the district, period. Thank you.
Luis Delgado, sorry.
Luis. Superintendent, I know you inherited a lot of this stuff, but now it's yours. That's just the way it is. I have a concern that I wanted to share with the Board and with the parents. As you all know, I talk about self-governing a lot, and that's the ability for the community, the citizens, to be involved in the decision-making process. And I feel strongly about the appointments of these principals without the staff and the parents of that school having an opportunity to meet with that person, to ask questions, and to kind of have a feel-out for them, for the comfort level. And I would like for the... For the present Board to really, you know, take that into consideration because we keep talking about community schools, right? But if the community's not involved, then it's like, it's like Donald Trump stuff. It's like alternative facts, right? There's nothing really going on with that, so we have to really take a look at that. The other thing is that I understand, and you would know, you all would know more about this than I do, that the director, special ed, and three other senior staff are leaving. And I want to make sure that, you know, we have a history, and I spoke about this the last time that I was here. We have a history of taking people, particularly principals, that have been not doing the best job that they can, you know? And they move them to the district, and they make them a boss. They make them a director or something, and we got to get away from that stuff. If these people can't handle the job at the school level, why would we promote them? What's the idea? I'm really, you know, and I keep telling you, I'm not that smart. Because when stuff like this happens, it just kind of confirms, because I don't understand it. You know what I'm saying? So we have to try to, Superintendent, we really have to try to get away from these policies that we kind of empower people, like the two women spoke about this STEP program, you know what I'm saying? We really have to, you know, try to be more responsive because our children are the ones that lose. You know, you people up there don't lose anything. You have your degrees, you have your education, but our children are not being considered when we make decisions, and that's a big problem for us. That's a big problem in our community. So we really have to try to do a better job of making sure that we have competent people in these positions. And I've always been against going with people from the outside unless we give somebody on the inside a shot first. We have a lot of people that are qualified, that have put a lot of work in. You know, we like to see some of that stuff, you know, happening. So that's, those are my comments for today. Thank you for listening, and I hope that, you know, we can do better if we set our minds to. So let's think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mickey Kramer and Sarah Egan, sorry.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here for the meeting. I'm Sarah Egan, and I am the State's Child Advocate. I run the Office of the Child Advocate, and I wanted to comment briefly tonight because I saw there are a couple of agenda items regarding the enhancing and ensuring adequate service delivery for children with disabilities. As I'm sure all of you know, I, Office, authored a report several months ago regarding the ability of the district to capably protect and serve children, and particularly vulnerable children. And we found serious and glaring deficiencies in the ability of the district to capably serve not only children in the district, but particularly children with disabilities and children with specialized needs. And we looked at a number of cases throughout the district that included allegations that children were subjected to abuse and neglect in district classrooms, and the majority of the children whose cases we looked at were children with disabilities. And about 15% of those children were children with autism. That's a very brief summary of some findings that we made with some significant recommendations to improve the capability of the district to serve its most vulnerable children. And I know the district serves many vulnerable children. The contracts that are before you tonight, which I won't comment on the specifics of, but I know that the goals of these are to ensure, I wouldn't say the greatest things, but the things that children are entitled to. All of the children in the district are entitled to an adequate education, but children with disabilities have legal, federal, state, and legal, state and federal entitlements to appropriate and adequate service delivery. You know, my Office continues to work closely with the district on a number of review issues. And the reality is, the reality is that we remain significantly concerned about whether vulnerable children with disabilities are being provided minimally adequate services and protection in accordance with state and federal law. And, you know, my Office's relationship with the school district and the city has been very positive, and I think that that is because every step of the way, city and district leadership have met us with a show of their commitment and good faith, their shared caring and passion for the children that we're all here to serve. But I have a job to do, and as a lawyer, as the child advocate for the State of Connecticut, I really thought this was an important opportunity to share with you both sort of the scope, gravity, and urgency of my concern for vulnerable children served in the school district and the need to continue to increase the capability of the district to meet its minimal obligations to these children. And I know that we share that commitment, but I thought it was important to come in person. The last thing I'll say, and I know my time is up, is that I do think, I appreciate the fiscal challenges that the city is in. I do strongly believe that the work that the district is contemplating is work that saves money in both the short-term, medium-term, and long-term. Because not serving children appropriately eventually costs more money, whether through compensatory services to children whose needs weren't met, the city's engaged in some of that work right now, or through very expensive reliance on out-of-district private programs, which the city, the district currently spends almost $40 million a year doing. So building capacity in the district to more capably serve its own children with complex disabilities will allow it, long-term, to be less reliant on more expensive compensatory remedies and extremely expensive private remedies. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Michael Downs?
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And there's three items I wanted to speak on. One, this morning's paper, it was an article on the fact that the City Council was considering amending the sick leave or sick time reimbursement for the city workers, which may or may not be a good thing, I don't know, but they're considering it anyway. And another is the salary of the superintendent. And I'm glad the superintendent has a nice, high salary. She certainly deserves it, and the superintendent's salary should be high. But I... In reviewing many of the salaries in central office, it seems to me that some of them are as much as, or many of them are as much as $60,000 to $75,000 too high. And they're definitely much higher than the salaries in the city, which I mentioned to the City Council that are too high as well, but they're not as high as the central office. And, you know, with the city facing all these fiscal problems and bankruptcy, possible bankruptcy, although I don't think so, they certainly behooves people to start looking at some of these salaries. And also, the central office, there's one way of eliminating salaries is reducing the number of people in central office. I remember 20 years ago, 22 years ago, when we started to have, the problems first came up, was trying to sell the school board to a private company. The board, they wanted to... They had 100 people in central office. Now there's over 300, over 350. Another thing is, we ought to keep the lines of communication open for the... With the school, the parents of the schools, and also the community people, the people in the communities, the school community, especially when it comes to administrative changes. And the third thing is, I think it's time to merge the Office of Human Resources under one person again, and that should be a certified person, and cut out this other nonsense about some kind of a lawyer or a legal office or something that's supposed to be a co-leader. Thank you.
So we're going to move on to reports, and I'll just make my report brief. We are, the Board is scheduled to have a retreat tomorrow, and we will be discussing the possibility of a new committee, which is Teaching and Learning, focused on curriculum, and some of the other things that we need to do a better job. And so it's our hope that we can help the Superintendent improve quality education by establishing a Teaching and Learning Committee. We will announce the new chairperson once we establish the committee, so hopefully we can get that done tomorrow. The, as you all know, the, there was an injunction with the CHEF, so the CHEF configuration remains the same. Therefore, our lottery process and everything will remain the same, and we're just subject to that, and I just wanted to update everyone. I had a meeting with Mr. Alivi Cardulis this morning, and Mr. Delgado, who just left. They are interested in establishing a Hartford Elementary Athletic League, and so we need to figure out how to help them with that. And the reason they came to me or the Board is because they want to partner with the district and possibly write a grant or something to support youth sports from the ages of two through, I guess, 18. So keep your eyes up for that. Also, joining us today is Mr. Peter Higgins standing in the back. He is the founder and CEO of the Hartford Pro-Am, and that is an event that's been taking place for the past 20 years, and it brings amateur basketball players from college and NBA stars to sports medical, and they graciously offer to donate all 100% of the concessions to Hartford Public Schools to support middle school sports and/or the Hartford Promise, anything that the Superintendent sees fit. So I want to thank you publicly for that, Mr. Higgins. He also agreed to launch the Superintendent's See Something, Say Something campaign, and anything else that we can think of. So he wants to be a full partner, so if you can think of anything that we should do or offer, or if you see Mr. Higgins, please feel free to give him some suggestions, and we're open to that. So I just want to thank you again for that. Appreciate that. We also currently are, they're currently employing, what, 30 Hartford youth?
About 35.
About 35 Hartford youth for summer jobs, so that is another wonderful and positive thing. And that is pretty much it for my Chairman's report. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. I actually have a brief update and two recognitions. You heard the Office of the Child Advocate, the Child Advocate herself, and I believe that Mickey is here as well, Mickey Kramer. And my report is in relation to some of the responses that we continue to have to make sure that we're implementing the action plan that addresses our commitment and our efforts to be transparent and fully committed to improving outcomes for all of our children. You heard the fact that, you know, our system was broken, and there are still some broken parts, and we remain committed to replacing, fixing the broken parts and replacing that dysfunction with systems that keep all of our students, inclusive of our students, our most vulnerable students, and making sure that we keep their needs at the forefront. And so to that end, I wanted to provide an update because the update is in relation to our efforts to build and sustain partnerships with the Department of Children and Families so that we can together collaboratively improve and continuously improve on our practices. And so we had a very productive meeting in July with my leadership team and the Department of Children and Families Hartford Region Leadership Team as well. And it was an opportunity for us to establish structures moving forward, to hold each other accountable for our work on behalf of our students. And so we have established a quarterly structure to meet with leadership on both sides, to review data, continuous improvement processes, and to improve our inter-agency collaboration and support. We are going to be conducting a case study peer review with DCF and Hartford Public Schools to improve processes on both sides, and DCF representatives will participate in our district data, attendance data team. And we, Hartford Public Schools, are going to also participate in, on an ongoing basis, on DCF's work group meeting as well. And so those are a lot of structures that were not in place before but have been intentionally identified moving forward so that we can, again, maintain the integrity of our work here at Hartford Public Schools. here at Hartford Public Schools. Good news, we do have a grant that we have just received, the Novo Foundation, in partnership with Education First and the Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors. They just recently announced that Hartford Public Schools has won a grant award from its Social and Emotional Learning Fund. The fund is going to allow us to implement a program to provide a safe environment for our newcomer EL English learners, to accelerate their academic English and learning through personalized instruction and community building. The project is a partnership between the school district and Hartford Public Library that will extend current work already being done with Buckley students, Buckley High students, under a grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences. And so, as you can see, all of our efforts are trying to be intentional, right? We're trying to be intentional around making sure that our students, at all levels, are feeling connected and valued in our district. And so, I wanted to highlight that grant opportunity. And lastly, it's a recognition, recognition for Board Member Karen Taylor, who was featured this week in this week's edition of Hartford Business Journal. She is, was named as the forty-on-the-forty list. It's a big deal here. That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. And I just have to repeat, that is awesome, and I am very proud to be associated with her. Okay, moving on, committee reports. First, I have policy. Madam Taylor.
Madam Taylor.
Ms. Taylor, excuse me.
I like Madam Taylor, it was good. Okay.
Madam Chair.
What's your overall point? Madam, Madam. I know. Good evening, community members. Before I get started with my report this evening, I first wanted to thank Mrs. Glanville for really kind of taking the reins on the suicide prevention policy that was adopted at last month's meeting in my absence. You know, I don't think that people know how much Mrs. Glanville lends her legal expertise to the Board of Education for the free, so I really do appreciate that, for you standing in my stead when I wasn't there, and making sure that we move that forward, because the policy committee has so many things in the hopper right now, it really is important that we stay on track. So, we last met on June fourteenth, where representatives from the Office of Academics presented the new administrative regulations for the new high school graduation requirements policy that was adopted in March. We have a couple of priorities that are related directly to school safety that are coming up, that we're going to look at again. We haven't looked at them in a while, because we've been, I won't say distracted, but we kind of had to switch gears and start working around some things in response to the OCA report. So, we're going to be looking at restraint, seclusion, and physical force again, abuse and neglect, and, under the advisement of risk management, regulations have been developed for the school volunteer policy. So really, what that translates to is more protections for our students in schools, yeah? Our committee has some really heavy lifting to do in the near future. In response to the OCA report, our policy has a working plan that's going to deal with accountability, safety, and just making sure that our paper is in line with what our people are doing, right? And we also have some policies that are going to be related to the upcoming conversations around school redesign. And at tomorrow's retreat, I'll be discussing how we can align policy with these priorities, particularly around school redesign. Again, just looking for more protections for community, real clarity around school closure, consolidation, relocation, all these new words that are coming up in our changing landscape. So that concludes this evening's policy report.
Thank you. I'm stepping in for Craig. And so, the next report we have is a School Choice and Facilities Committee, which I am the chair of, so I'll be brief. We had a meeting on June twenty-seventh. We had actually had a special meeting of the Facilities and Choice Committee just a week before that, right before our last board meeting. So, this meeting was brief, given that we had just had one before, and we had a couple of agenda items. The MLK update was brief, again, because we, as many know, we approved the ed specs for MLK and the configuration for MLK at our last board meeting, which the application for that was due June thirtieth, and it went forward. And so, that's all in the pike now for MLK to be our next renovation project going forward. And we had an update on Weaver, which is, as most know, is underway and under construction and moving forward. There was a community event that was very well-attended, we heard a report on that, and it was to inform the community of the progress and to get some more feedback. One of the things that has come up recently is the Phase Three of Weaver is now proceeding forward, which is the athletic facilities are slated to be renovated now, in addition to the footprint of the building, which has actually caused a little bit of a change to the design specs for the building, because initially, when the athletic facilities weren't going to be renovated, and the Doc Hurley Fieldhouse was not going to be renovated, there were some additional locker rooms that were being included in the design of the building. But now that the Doc Hurley Fieldhouse is being renovated, those will be taken out. So there'll be a little change there, but otherwise, Phase Three is moving forward now, too, which is good. That means the athletic facilities will be part of that. And we had some just broad discussion, and we usually don't have committee meetings during the summer, but like policy, we are going to have it on August, Facilities and Choice Committee meeting, just to really jumpstart some of the work on the redesign. And one of the things we talked about this last meeting, which we'll be having more thorough reporting out on in the August meeting, is just some of the additional data that we need to mine and potentially request around, really just like making sure we have all the information we need around facilities and enrollment to really, to jumpstart the redesign process well for next school year, so. And that was really it. Oh, I'm still in charge, sorry. I had the gavel. Okay, so we'll move on to the business agenda. Do we still have, we have a question?
You have another report?
No, there was no. Okay. So, we're going to move on to the business agenda, and the first item on the business agenda is the administrative appointments. Do I usually read it? Do he read it? So, we have administrative appointments. That the Hartford Board of Education approves the superintendent's recommendation to appoint June Cahill to the position of principal at Canelli Elementary School effective July nineteenth, two thousand, twenty seventeen. Do I have a motion to?
I'm going to have your report first, and then I even know.
Okay, wait for you. Okay. So Dr. Torres is going to, Dr. Torres is going to.
Yes, I'm going to just do a brief report first, and then.
We introduce the candidate.
Correct. She's going to.
Thank you.
So, Ms. June Cahill has worked in education for Hartford Public Schools for a total of twenty-three years. She began her career as an elementary classroom teacher at Maria Sanchez Elementary School, moving to Canelli Elementary in two thousand and eleven. She has served as a teacher, teacher leader, academic dean of students for Hartford, and has proven to be a teacher leader who has spent her career here in Hartford in urban education, working with individuals of all ages and diverse cultural, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds. Most recently, Ms. Cahill has worked as the acting principal at Canelli Elementary School, and where she has impacted the community as evidenced by comments made by the SGC during the search process, that Ms. Cahill has a strong tie to Canelli and its community and is committed to the school. She is student-centered, hardworking, enthusiastic in everything that she does. She remains positive even during challenging situations, and the SGC agrees that Ms. Cahill is visible to all stakeholders. Prior to her role as acting principal, she served as the academic dean at Canelli, and she served as a school administrator, inclusive of roles in mentoring teachers, evaluating staff, overseeing disciplinary and behavioral systems, the implementation of positive behavioral intervention supports, and advancing the solid partnership with the University of Connecticut. Ms. Cahill? There you go.
So, we, so we usually have, we have our appointments come in, and we have an opportunity to ask them questions, have comments, so is there anybody, any questions or comments for Ms. Cahill?
Your acting principal at Canelli.
I have been, yes, sir.
And prior to that, what position you have?
I was the dean of students, before that instructional coach at Canelli, and before that, I spent seventeen years at Maria Sanchez School as a teacher.
In the classroom, prior.
Classroom teacher.
Prior to that, right.
For seventeen years, yes. I would just like to thank the board and the superintendent for the opportunity to lead Canelli. As you can see, I have a very enthusiastic staff. I am grateful to be able to offer them consistency and stability with the city and to serve the Canelli community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Second.
They're moving second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Congratulations. Business agenda item A two, contract approval of the Center for Children with Special Needs, five hundred and six thousand. As part of the Office of Child Advocate Action Plan, a contract was executed with CCNSN to conduct an assessment of Hartford Public Schools' special education programs and services for students with significant neurodevelopmental disorders and complex learning needs. As a result of that assessment, a proposal was set forth to begin systemic improvements through intensive consultative and direct support with staff. The Center for Children with Special Needs will provide services to expand the capacity of the current special education services to address comprehensively and with empirically supported interventions, the needs of students of all ages with neurodevelopmental disorders and other complex learning needs. This will include individual and program-level consultative services to establish a sustainable multidisciplinary process for engaging best-practice interventions across multiple domains. So the motion is, did you want, should I just make the motion now?
I'm going to have some.
Okay. So, I'll.
Should I make the motion, and then you can speak on it?
Okay. So the motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the Center for Children with Special Needs for the term delineated in the contract ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, at a cost not to exceed five hundred and six thousand.
So this, of course, is in relation to our response and commitment, a response to the Office of the Child Advocate report, and the implementation of the action plan in response to that report. And the contract with the Center for Children with Special Needs addresses two concerns identified in the report. Concern number five, which noted that special vulnerability of children with disabilities to possible abuse and neglect, and concern number eight, which noted that the Hartford Public Schools may currently lack the internal capacity to implement and monitor the action plan. And so, the OCA flagged several issues, and as it relates to this contract, it flagged programmatic deficiencies that resulted in injuries to children, deficient training, inadequate personnel and supervision, and specifically, the report called for the district to obtain technical assistance, to obtain support to children both who have experienced trauma, and children with special needs. Currently, we do not have the necessary infrastructure to serve our students with special needs well, neither from an academic nor from a social and emotional behavioral perspective. And so, this contract is not structured as a service delivery model, but a capacity-building model and approach that will help us develop the internal knowledge, the skills, the capacity, the structures, to do this work well and to be able to sustain the work. And obviously, to partner with our families. We want to continue to be transparent about the work and about our learning in service of our students. The Center for Children with Special Needs is going to teach us. They will help us set the systems and then monitor our work to ensure our compliance. This will support all of our four strategic goals, our priorities around operational effectiveness, teaching and learning, because we want to make sure that our staff, everyone, certified staff, everyone that interacts with our students has the capacity, the knowledge, the skill to service our students with excellence and knowledge. And of course, it also addresses the priority that we have around systemic accountability, holding ourselves accountable to the delivery of service and education that is top-quality and meets the needs of all of our students. Also, a point of reference from a fiscal-financial perspective is that the funding for this contract has previous, was previously embedded in the new line item that was created specifically to implement the mandates identified in the report, and so this line item has been approved as part of the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen budget. And one last, one last comment that I just want to reference is that, as a board, you voted on implementing the action plan and in support of our commitment, our collective commitment to repair the broken parts and to replace the dysfunctions with systems that work and that include accountability, transparency, and consequences. And so, I just want to thank you again for your commitment to the work ahead on behalf of our children. So we have folks here from the center to come up, please.
So I'm going to make the motion, and then we'll have a chance to have questions. Do I have a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the Center for Children with Special Needs for the term delineated in the contract ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, not to exceed five hundred and six thousand dollars? Do I have a motion?
Show more. Second.
So, do we have any questions?
Well, what do you do with the students? Is it a program? Is it at home? Is it ongoing? Is it therapeutic? All of those? Why did I ask?
So, our work has the opportunity to partner directly with the educational teams that are part of sort of the existing programs that are in place. And so, our teams work directly in the classrooms, modeling, showing, and demonstrating ways to interact and support, and importantly, establish independence for individuals with complex disabilities. Simultaneously, while we're working with and supporting those individuals, we have the opportunity to train and guide the teaching teams to know how to do that work. So, what we often discuss is that at any point that one of our team members has the opportunity to be in a classroom or be with a family, we are simultaneously working with that individual and training other people to implement the work that we're doing, to understand it conceptually. The superintendent pointed out something that's extremely important, which is, this is not a delivery model by which we come in and provide those services absent active participation. In fact, from the moment that we began the needs assessment, we had the opportunity to interview families, paraeducators, special educators, related service staff, administrative team members. Because the idea is to build a vision for a program by which the school teams partner with technical expertise, such that at every point, you should be able to look and say, "We are three months in. Talk to us about how the students in these programs are showing signs of improvement, and talk to us about how our educators are showing increased signs of professional development and ability to understand and implement." Simultaneously, both being made more healthy as we work through the process. The idea should be that programs of this nature, and we have the opportunity to do this with many communities, become self-sustaining, have the ability to say internally, as part of our community, we want to be able to rely upon our own technical expertise, to have local experts who can implement these services, and that, of course, has a tremendous impact at multiple levels, not the least of which is the ability to work with many students and keep them in their local community. The other is, of course, the resources saved when you're able to train your internal staff, and that they are then able to maintain with high fidelity all the programming. So it isn't a predetermined or packaged project that come in, but rather, one that needs to be built simultaneously with the support and expertise of a team that can come in and say, "Here's what is necessary in order to educate learners at this level or at that other level," and for the families, the students, the educators to say, "And here's the vision of our community and how we want a program like this to look." So that union to us is what makes our job a true pleasure, but it's also at the center of what makes the program sustainable, so that at the end, the educators, the families are saying, "This is our program that we built and that we feel is essential and that represents the needs of our community," rather than one that was. represents the needs of our community," rather than one that was assigned to or applied in our experience. That model is not sustainable and won't have the kind of impact that it would be necessary in this case.
It's a continuing, it's a continuing program. What grade you picked them up in, for instance?
Sure. So the proposal that we recommended was actually to begin at two different levels for your learners. One is at your pre-K and your very early elementary level, so that you begin to establish a process by which your learners, when they first enter your school district, when they first turn three or are identified for needing special education services, begin to establish high-quality education. That's going to have a tremendous benefit in the immediate term because your youngest learners are going to access a very high level of training. The other tremendous impact, and the thing that gets all of us so excited, is that that means that when they, for example, leave the preschool and enter kindergarten, we're going to have individuals who are that much more ready for inclusive practices, to learn from their peers, to participate in the general education environment, and over their lifespan will certainly require fewer supports because they themselves will become substantially more independent. The other recommendation made as a function of our needs assessment was to work with your most senior students, the high school and 18 to 21 programs in particular. The STEP program has been spoken about several times this evening, and we believe that it's a program that requires some immediate support in order to start meeting the needs of students who don't have the years that remain for a preschool student. And so we're actually recommending that you start your program work at both levels, your youngest learners and your most senior learners, because anything that can be done to establish for a student who particularly is between 18 and 21 years of age, to become community-ready, to be able to navigate your community, seek help, to be able to have the pedestrian skills that are necessary, to have the vocational skills that are necessary. Those are things that allow that person to become a 25 and a 30-year-old who feels confident, who feels contributory, and who feels that they are a member of their community, not simply relying upon that community, but contributing to it.
You pick them up at 18?
The STEP program supports learners.
At 18?
Yeah, 18, 19, 20.
Aren't they ready to graduate?
Up until 21.
And where do they go after that? You follow them?
The Center for Children with Special Needs does. The project that we're proposing here is a school-based project, and the obligation of the school system is at 21. But CCSN is a lifespan organization, so we have services for individuals who are post-21 and doing different kinds of.
I understand they have a right to get training till 21.
Right.
Okay? They graduated at 18. Now they're out of school. What do you do with them? You're still following them, but they're not ours anymore.
Right.
So we're paying for continuing education?
I'm not sure. I don't know that I understand the question.
Well, the question is, we are paying for students in the Hartford system. That student has graduated. He doesn't, in a sense, belong to us anymore. Are you still following him up to 21?
Yes, so this project.
Dr. Torres is going to respond. So we do have students with special needs that are older than 18 years old that we still have to service them.
Yeah, we service them, but not in the school.
Yes, we do. Up until, yes.
Oh, they're still seniors.
Some students require, correct.
They're still seniors.
Correct. Up until 21, yes.
Yeah, okay.
They are part of your obligation to.
What about the middle section? You've got the PK, and then you've got the TOP. What happens to the guys in the middle?
Excellent question. So the proposal is to begin a continuous improvement plan with your community, so one that is viable and sustainable in its first year, and we recommended a proposal that extends through this first year. So clearly, any read of that kind of work would say you would have many roads ahead. One of them would be continuing to create a line of education that goes through your later elementary, middle, and high school years. You would have that journey in front of you. The other would be laterally. There are far more students than in any one initial preschool team that you would work with. So the other would be growth across your community, so that more than one location within your community is able to say, "We can support these learners." So a fair and honest proposal to say what can be achieved in this first year by our measure of your level of needs and the appropriate ways to start establishing a continuous improvement plan was to start at these levels. But certainly, that journey would be ahead.
I think one of the important things for the board to consider is that with preschoolers, you have downstream benefits. So if you capture the integrity of instruction and those kids progress well, and we should be able to identify and measure how well they progress all the way through, because that's the nature of the consultative work that CCSN does, you're able to demonstrate what's effective and efficient by community school and what's not, and then remedy that as you move forward. So the whole idea, as Dr. Palmieri mentioned, is that you will have the potential to have kids who require fewer and fewer costly services as they move through the school system because of the downstream benefit of having a much more effective, intensive, and evidence-driven early intervention and then early elementary experience. The high school-age kids and the kids in the STEP program were identified as being in very significant need, and as part of our needs assessment, the significance of that need and of those children and their families was very evident. So we felt that the most ethical response would be not only to say, "Let's help on the downstream side, but let's get involved up to our neck in the kids who only have three or four years left with your system and do the kinds of things with staff development and continuity of training that will not only benefit those students, but the ones that will come ahead of them, behind them, as they move through upper elementary and then middle school into those programs." That's the rationale for that. And we neglected to introduce ourselves. Dr. Mark Palmieri, who's the Assistant Director of CCSN, Dr. Courtney Cotter, who's the Director of Consultation, and Dr. Michael Powers, who's the Director of the Center. Other questions?
I have a question.
Hi, hello and good evening. And I'm actually not sure if it's for you or for Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Going to the pre-K and early learners, is it across the district that is being proposed? Is it certain classrooms just interested in what exactly the population will be?
So we're recommending that you initiate a pilot at one site where you have, currently have established preschool services. There's a current program wherein those services are currently being provided that we feel would be an appropriate and important place to improve the service model, and it is associated with an early elementary space. So this past academic year was primarily kindergarten students, so there was a flow between those two spaces. Given the scope and size of the system, of course, that's a small start, but in our experience, it's an appropriate and ethical recommendation to make to say, establish an internal model that you can look and say, "How do we sustain and enable this internally with our staff, working directly with the families and children who are in there?" Because from that, you now have a lateral bridge to say, "Our job now is to replicate this service." When we start so broad that there are dozens of spaces, the sort of chaos in the system, the ability to provide the resource and to establish a model where you can look internally and say, "This is the kind of services that are going to be needed to receive learners of all types, who have individualized education programs, who have intensive special needs." So it is to establish that pilot, but we believe that that pilot, by folks like yourselves, by community members, should then be very carefully looked at, should be hopefully visited, should be sort of seen actively, and for families to be able to look and say, "This kind of model does not rely endlessly on external resources provided and pushed in, but rather, our folks, provided with the kind of training and support they need to learn how to meet the needs of these students, are now doing so, and now we can replicate that." In our experience, that has been the way to ensure a very high-quality level of service and the ability to study that process. No system, when it starts to change, is going to change perfectly. So the ability to look across and say, "What do we learn from?" Because one year from now, our hope and vision would be that not only are there replicable pilot set up, but that the journeys of that first team pre-correct or avoid challenges of the future teams. So because of that, that's why we made the proposal of this type.
And I think, too, the ability to start with one pilot program gives us the opportunity to learn the specifics of the Hartford Public Schools and what that culture and climate requires in addition to the systems that we're able to introduce here. So starting with one small pilot program allows you to teach us how our systems will look within your school system, so that when we're replicating, we can be sensitive to the specifics of this particular district.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Well, I'm not sure if it's for them or for you. So I mean, when I hear that, you know, it's a pilot in one school, I understand, I mean, I understand the rationale, but I also, I guess it's a comment followed by a question you want to raise, that there is an urgency to this work. I mean, we heard from Sarah Egan and, you know, Dr. Torres framed this, that, I mean, like, there's significant, ongoing, current issues with this population, and I mean, across the district with the OCA report. And so, you know, when I'm hearing we're going to do this for a year as a pilot on this small scale, like, I guess maybe it is more of a question for you, like, are we confident that that is going to be scalable thereafter to really, you know, this is what it's going to take to address these systemic issues that are really urgent?
Can you speak to the continuous improvement frame?
Sure. Absolutely. So some of the things that, and we know we tend to write a lot, so that are captured within our document, include that while you initiate some of these pilot sites, which would receive direct in-the-class working, modeling, and the ability to sort of say, "Let me partner with a teacher, work together, show exactly how to do this," there are going to be training activities that you can provide more universally, and it is important to understand the difference between a teaching team that has access to the training, which we think you should immediately establish more universally, and then those that are getting the direct technical training on the floor. Those folks will experience a higher level of professional development more quickly because of that. But as we had some of our conversations around balancing the scope of the need, one of the things that we can begin doing is look and say, "Those educators who are working in those locations, they're going to receive a certain amount of training that can be done on a larger scale." And in many of the communities we work with, we do do some of those larger-scale activities so that you begin to prepare and set the seed. The other thing that can, of course, happen, and the way that we've proposed this model is that it is not sort of set in stone, come in and be done. There are constant administrative planning sessions. So in addition to the direct on-the-floor training and work with the educational teams, is multiple times monthly administrative review, planning, so that you could look and say, "Gee, something just happened, and we do have an acute issue, and we have folks who we're working in partnership with, and how do we react to that and adapt to that?" That would not be unfamiliar to us, and so what we try to do is establish a program model by which the educators directly in their classrooms are receiving support, but also the administrative team is receiving support. Evident within the needs assessment report were indicators around the need for a senior administrative-level presence that is familiar with, understood, and inserviced on the needs of the educators who work in those programs. And so we are also recommending within this that level. Because of that, you'll be establishing a foundation with administrative support who will be better able to survey the rest. It is not a perfect answer. It would be lovely to be able to look and say, "In the first year, address all of these items immediately." The level and scope of resource that would be necessary for that would almost be, it would certainly be insurmountable for us to look at you and say, "We could do that in one year." So there is a balance there that we respect and that we feel with you very vigorously. Having met the families, sat in the classrooms and been with those students and talked to the educators, the scope of need is wide, and it is important to be honest about that.
If I can add one piece to this, though. We've been doing program, school-based program development at the systems level for about 30 years, and one of the things we've learned about sustainability is you have to know what your active ingredients are, because you can't scale if you don't scale the right things. Or if you try to scale and you don't know what the right things are, you go down a lot of rabbit holes, you make a lot of blind alleys, you think something is working, but you haven't evaluated it in an objective, empirical way. And for those of you that we have bored with this very long needs assessment that we wrote, it's good as a sleep aid. One of the things that you'll notice in there is there's a very, very heavy emphasis on outcome evaluation on multiple levels. So it's social validity for families, is this working for you? The empirical validation of teaching strategies with kids, and then also, insofar as the staff is concerned, are staff not only learning the strategies to teach the kids, right? But are they maintaining them with fidelity? Are they staying consistent over time? Because you can learn something and then you can drift. So what's really important is that you evaluate for that drift and correct for that drift as you're going along. So when we look at these models, we look at creating, if you will, a very well-defined entity that you, as a board member or a building principal, or more importantly, a regular education principal who has no experience in this field, can walk in and say, "I noticed what's done that's different, and I can see what the active ingredients are, and I want that, or I want to take that home with me." That's a really important thing for us to sort of leave behind. And when we can do that, some of the universal design elements that Dr. Palmieri was referencing, they, if you will, they bleed into the regular ed environment and support the culture of the school in being more effective and efficient with general instruction. Just like PVI S does, it works at the level, different levels in the school. These kinds of instructional strategies, good teaching works for all kids. So what we try to do is not only to take these teaching procedures for our most vulnerable and challenged learners, but to distill out the elements of those teaching procedures and make them broadly available to the school community. So if there was a building-level instructional core lesson being run, the only thing that would be able to limit the attendees would be the size of the room. A building principal could come and say, "Can my teachers come and sit in on that?" And we would never be in a position to say, "No," because they won't benefit from it. So that's a bit of why. And then the other thing is, don't forget, there's four sites. And you're right, it's not enough pilots to go around, but there's only so much you can do and really understand that, those active ingredients. And so once we can figure out four-year preschool and elementary and then move towards the middle, our assessment, our hope, is that this capacity building will be long, will be going on for a long time, and we will be in your rearview mirrors, because our intent here is planned obsolescence. It's our intent with any school-based program development, is that we have plenty of work to do in a lot of places, and the better we can prepare an existing environment and then go someplace else, kids are better off. So I hope that helps.
Thank you.
Ms. Torres.
So I first want to apologize to our families and community members, if any of the comments that were up here, that were set up here offended anyone or their loved ones or their families. I think that we're trying to turn the culture within the district about like otherness, they're not ours. I mean, there really is a connection between quality of education and quality of life for our citizens in the city, so I deeply apologize if we offended anyone in our debate up here. Quick question, a quick response hopefully, too, right? So I'm trying to make sense of the money, because that's just where my eyes go in these times. So there are going to be four sites, correct? How many team members will be working within this year for the allotted contract amount? There are more questions to follow, so just how many team members?
So there'll be eight people days per week on the ground in the Hartford Public Schools.
Eight people days?
Per week.
So imagine two Mondays, two Tuesdays, two Wednesdays.
Two team members.
Four sites.
Yeah.
And then, three times a month, a senior doctoral-level administrative support liaison person in addition to those eight.
Okay, okay, great. That's helpful. And so this is training for the duration of a year. My question is, like, typically, what is the length of partnerships that the Center for Children with Special Needs has with districts? Like, how long till we could get it right? Like, so should we look to like an annual contract for the next five years, next 10 years, next? I mean, I know it would be like a rough guess, because you have to, you know, get into the site, see what we need, scale it, all of that, but like, typically, what does the partnership look like in terms of duration of time?
So the scope of the project matters significantly. We have some communities we have the opportunity to work with that are very small, and so their growth plan is more modest. Some of that, I feel, is important that the board reflect on hinges tremendously on how well the administrative team members at the building and district level push and advocate for these kinds of services. If you get high-quality administrative support, you're going to be able to move forward those individuals who are assimilating this knowledge quickly, and you're going to have a very fast growth. If you are spending a lot of your consultative time trying to establish buy-in, get follow-through, get folks who will carry the ball while we are not there, you will struggle more. So openly and transparently, that is a variable you must be open to considering. It is not uncommon for any educational change initiative to take three, four years to really establish its foundation. That is not to say that it's certain and guaranteed that the same contract proposal makes good sense over those times. Our obligation any times that we are doing this kind of work is to be able to look and say, "Hey, we're a couple months in. Show us with the data. How far have our teams come? What do you recommend next?" And then to look internally. And then to look internally and say, "Are there positions, folks, individuals, who need to be empowered to carry some of this because they are prepared?" Educational change initiatives of any kind, certainly in special education, however, rarely come to a perfect completion with full execution in one year. But it, of course, would be, you know, the community's choice to say, "We want to continue in this avenue, or we want to take a different one." That is why we try to always scope things out. Here's what we think we can do honestly for you in one year. And it would be our obligation, and we would encourage thinking well ahead of this time next year, if we were to work together, to look and say, "What are you seeing? What are you recommending? Can we come see those spaces? Can we learn from them? Can we talk with the families who are in them?"
So a rough estimate on the average length of time that you typically have partnerships with districts?
Yeah, I would say you're probably, if you force the question, it's probably in the neighborhood of, I know you are, it's probably in the neighborhood of four to six years. But we've got districts who keep coming up with new ideas. So we can start at a district, and they say, "We only want you to come in and build a preschool program." And 15 years later, they're asking us, 15, to, "Would you please build a transition program so our 21-year-olds with significant disabilities are employable fully or partially when they're 21 and one day?" It's a whole different question. So these are so individualized to the towns, though, you know? And it kind of depends on where the town, the administration, and the board wants to go with it. So probably the best answer we can give you.
And I'm only forcing the question not to devalue the work, but just so that we can advocate for what we need for our students and just to think long-term and be visionary. Thank you so much.
One thing we did in one of the very first programs we started was put the preschool classroom, very first classroom, because they had triplets with autism that were identified, and they were going to otherwise have to bus into an out-of-district placement for an hour and 15 minutes away. Okay? Do you know where the superintendent decided to put the classroom? In the same building next door to where the Board of Ed met. Do you know why? So you guys would walk by all the time and see for yourselves what's going on. The level of transparency that programs like ours that we're proposing want to have for the community is very high, because the community is what makes the kids continue when school's out at the end of the day. They're the ones who support the kids and stop and shop. So the more exposure to what teaching is, what fruit it's bearing, to watch a little kid go from nonverbal to verbal, and you've watched that kid because you've gone into that board office, that's pretty powerful medicine. So those are the kinds of things that we have sort of categorically stood for insofar as, you know, public accountability and transparency.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions, comments, or debates? I already made the motion, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you for the opportunity, and we hope to see you in those classrooms.
Good. That's good.
Okay. We're at item number three. Agenda item number three, contract continuation approval, CBS Therapy, $744,016. CBS Therapy will be contracted to provide speech and language services mandated by HBS students who require these services. Due to the shortage of speech and language professionals, it is necessary to utilize this service to ensure compliance with state and federal special education guidelines. The Harvard Board of Education authorized the superintendent to execute contract CBS Therapy for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2018, at a cost not to exceed $744,016. We have a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Dr. Torres Rodriguez.
And just a little background. Speech and language pathologists have again been designated by the state as a shortage area, also happens to be a national trend. So it is necessary for us to utilize the services to ensure compliance with federal and state special education guidelines. CBS Therapy will be contracted to provide the speech and language services to our mandated students. And Hartford Public Schools has worked with CBS Therapy for years and has had a very successful relationship. They've been able to fill all of our requested positions in a timely and consistent manner. This school year, we are contracting for eight positions. We have five positions that need to be filled and would also like to build an additional three positions to plan for expected retirements, resignations, and any additional mandated services that are required throughout the year. Building in the additional positions will prevent the delays in services due to the time it takes to amend the current contract. And so this contract is economical in the way that we pay the company as a flat fee, and we do not pay for benefits. I will say that, you know, in thinking and talking with our Office of Talent Management and Human Resources, you know, we have to think about ways that we can certainly be strategic, but, you know, other districts, other colleagues, other superintendents that I speak to, right? This is the issue that we are all facing. And so I'm trying to be proactive in identifying with our higher ed partners any ideas and initiatives that they may be implementing. You know, there is some promise with our partner at Central Connecticut State University. Did have a meeting with President Toro this morning, actually, and some of the conversation around establishing scholarships, if you will, or other avenues to really recruit potential speech and language therapists. But it is not something, a challenge that is unique to Hartford. It is nationwide a struggle, so.
Just some background.
I have a question.
Question.
Ms. Glammer.
Sorry. Do we, because I think, I mean, if I recall, like, this, we keep increasing every year the number of speech and language therapists that we're hiring through contract. Do we have any that we actually still staff, or is it becoming, everybody is coming through?
I'm going to ask Edie DeSimone and Katie Glenn to speak to the details as to who currently do we have.
As far as?
Our own.
Our own. Okay. So we have 25 full-time speech paths right now. We have about another eight that are part-time, and then we have currently five that we are through CBS Therapy. We have actually hired since June of 2012, 41 speech pathologists, which is incredibly significant, but retention has been a little bit of an issue. So we've lost 26 in that five years as well.
Guess because they're in really high demand everywhere, so.
At any one time, there's 25 open positions in the state of Connecticut.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
This comes up every year, so.
Well, yeah, and I guess I'll just add my question to it, because I've been here four years. It's come every year with the same, we have a shortage, but I've never seen a strategy on retention. So my first question is, why is retention such a difficult thing for us?
So we started doing some exit interviews with the speech paths that are leaving, and some of the common things are lack of support, they don't feel overly supported, and resources. So my budget has, is for speech and language, hearing impaired occupational therapists and physical therapists. And this year, it's $8,000. One assessment for speech and language can be between $500 and $700. And then as far as resources for therapy and intervention and so on, they don't get a budget from the school. So when you can go to another district, and, you know, the resources are more plentiful, that's a big border as well. So that's a bit of a struggle. So that's been a common theme. And then I think their feeling of, the administration, the building doesn't necessarily understand what they do and the value, so that's been, they feel a bit devalued, so I think that's something that needs to be worked on. If you're getting pulled all the time to do district testing or to cover the teachers all this or that, what you're stating to them as their therapy is not really that important, and it's kind of expendable to go use for some results. So those are some things I think we need to work at at building levels so that people who, you know, have a six-year degree feel valued for what they know. So those are some of our biggest struggles for retention. As far as the recruiting plan, we do partner with Southern, and I go down and speak on a panel down there twice a year with the agreement that they will send students to us, grad students. They will send as many as 20 in the spring, and we hire almost all that come to us. We've never had that many. The struggle is, I need speech paths who will supervise them, and how do I incentivize that? So then we can talk, I guess, at another time. But I certainly could, out of 20, I mean, probably could hire 15 for the following fall. So that's one of the avenues that I can seek to increase our staff.
So just, I guess, if I'm a superintendent, what I'm hearing, first, I would like to, I don't want to spend time on the budget. You said $8,000? Yeah. I don't understand that out loud. And so if we can possibly sometime, either through Finance Committee or some other time, can we explore that? Because it's significant. However, I can't take in the full totality of what she's expressing, because we don't know. But my question is, is it possible that we can revisit this contract maybe quarterly? Just so we can get an update on what your processes is going forward throughout the year in terms of how you're trying to recruit, what your changes you're making to sort of help bolster this program, support it internally? Because I guess what I'm hearing is that we have a structural issue that we need to deal with, and I know you're dealing with it. So I just want to sort of tie all that together. That's all. But again, I understand we need to have the professionals, but again, this is very expensive to come up every year, and if we can try to figure out how to either collaborate or do something different, I'm all ears, but I guess I just want to strategize or figure out how we can strategize to help.
Just to clarify, the ask for the report as it relates to revising or revisiting the contract, so data on service delivery or asking for the contract to be a quarterly approval?
I think service delivery, not contract. Just in terms of, if we can conceptualize what steps you are trying to make, how difficult it is, because again, we usually just have this conversation once a year, and we never really get into the meat and potatoes of how we can do, how we can help you get this problem resolved.
So we can add that to the Finance Committee agenda for review.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions. Any other comments or questions? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No? The ayes have it. Okay. Item B, consent agenda. I'm going to make one motion to take the whole consent agenda up as one item. Do I have a second?
Second.
I mean, excuse me, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a second. All in favor of taking up the agenda of the consent agenda as one motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Ayes have it. All right, so that is consent. And now we have, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Hold on to consent.
Oh, I thought we just did it. I thought we just did it.
We voted to take it up together.
Yeah, I guess you didn't hear me. I did that already. So I'll do it again. No, no, I did that. I asked to take it up as one item, and I asked for a motion. I got that motion, then I asked for the vote. I did. I'll do it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Well, the ayes have it. I did it quickly, sorry. And we have our last item. Item C is executive session, potential liabilities. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Second. So moved, second. We are clear for executive session. Are we bringing anyone with us?
Yes. Second vote. That's what I'm just saying.
Okay. For the record, we're bringing outside counsel, Mr. John Griffin, and co-counsel.